To being a quorum president, I call this meeting to order. Please stand for the flag salute.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United-
This meeting is being held in accordance with due public notice thereof and pursuant to the New Jersey State Sunshine Law. Notice of this meeting was advertised in the press and a copy of same has been posted on the bulletin board in the municipal building. All applicants are hereby advised that should you receive board approval tonight, you must come forward and sign a form which informs you regarding the timing of receiving building permits and mercantile licenses. At the end of your case tonight, please see the board administrator to sign the two information sheets. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes of July 23rd? All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes. Do I hear a motion to approve the resolutions and decisions? Number 31, 2013, Stephen Marshall. Number 32, 2013, Mark and Susan Traeger. Number 33, 2013, Cedar Grove Avenue LLC. Number 34, 2013, Alan Frankel and Eugene Carriosa. Number 35, 2013, Peter Campa.
Motion?
I'll second.
That guy there and-
Gotcha.
All in favor? All opposed? You opposed? Motion, the pass. First case tonight?
Yes, today.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Chris Baylons and very briefly, I have the Dugan matter, which is number nine on the board's agenda. I sent Mr. Rubin and Ms. Casey a letter requesting that that be adjourned to September. It has been adjourned administratively at this point to September 26th. The reason for that is I noticed on the plan that there are some variances called out that I can actually remove from the plan. So we'd like to revise the plan so it's a clean application going forward. I would ask, since it's only a one-month adjournment, that we not be required to re-notice or re-advertise? In the event there are any additional variances that come up going forward, we would agree to re-notice and re-advertise. But since the plan is actually a cleaner plan, we think under these circumstances it might be appropriate for the board to grant us that one consideration for a one-month adjournment without re-noticing. We would make an announcement now to anybody here for that application, that would be their notice. Of course, if that's okay with the board and its members.
I recommend that's okay. You know, obviously, you're going to waive any type of statutory problems. We can re-notify, I guess Mr. Patterson can say what the case is, and that's re-notify for what date it is. And if there's any additional variance, like you said, you're going to have to then re-notify.
But what I'm asking is that an announcement made this evening that the matter is being carried without having to republish and re-notice the 200-foot list.
That's fine.
Thank you very much.
So if anyone is here for the public for the case of Thomas and Janet Dugan, 362 North Rumpson Avenue, that case will not be heard tonight, it will be heard at the September meeting. Notification will not be required. Yes? I don't know which one it will be. It's on the September 26th meeting. For the record, Jim Gallantino and Tom Collins are now present. First case, Evans Grove, New Jersey LLC, 204 North Adams Avenue, Block 428, Lot 82.01 in the MF District, degrain a C variance for front yard setback and possibly others. Taxes are current and proof of advertising and notifying is satisfied. Mr. Rubin?
Roger Rubin? I do. Subject property is vacant land, 62 and 1/2 feet wide by a shallow 50 feet deep totaling in all 3,125 square feet. Before demolition, there was an aged duplex on the lot with three bedrooms on the first floor and two on the second floor unit. The application herein proposes a modest, single-family house with four bedrooms and a den on a footprint of 1,100 square feet at two stories. Jim, can you turn down the volume a little bit? I keep moving back from the mic. That was a good idea. The variances are for front setback for the house, designed at 12 feet 1 and 1/4 inches versus 21.2 feet required, and porch, 7 feet 1 and 1/4 inches back versus 15.8 feet required. Comments? Field inspection by board members will allow you to determine if these variances block light or air, impede views, or impact privacy or any next-door neighbors. Two, this is a block where front setbacks diverge widely, so the averaging procedure is skewed. Three houses are in the 30-foot setback range, three are in the 15-foot range, and one is 8 feet. Under these very unusual circumstances, you should look at the end of the block in which the proposed house is located, which is at the low end of the array of setbacks. Three, lot depth may be a consideration. 50 feet deep is unusually shallow on a block where the predominant setback is 125 feet. A fully compliant house, front, rear, and sides, would be a mere 18.8 feet deep and only have a footprint of 752 square feet. The proposed house is only two stories, not the more common 2 and 1/2 stories in this neighborhood. The applicants propose four off-street parking spaces, whereas only two are required. Thus, lower density, fewer bedrooms, double the required parking. No conditions are suggested at this time.
Good evening. Brian Callahan of the law firm Callahan, Thompson, Thompson, on behalf of the applicant. For the property, it's 204 North Adams Avenue. Mr. Rubin's report's pretty succinct. There was an old duplex on the property, it has been demolished, and we're here tonight for a front yard setback for the house and a front yard setback for the porch. I have an exhibit, Mr. Weiss has prepared, A1, which is the architectural plan. We have an A2, which is your tax map. It ties into what Mr. Rubin was indicating, is the skewed nature of the front yard setbacks. I'll hold it up and then I'll pass it around, so you just have an idea. We're Lot 82.01, which we're guessing that 30 or 40 years ago was 125-feet-deep lot facing the side street. It was subdivided at some point in time and things, and houses were built. As you go down the rest of the block, they're all 125-foot-deep houses, where we only have a 50-foot-deep. So what happens is, most of the houses going down the block have deeper setbacks which skew your front yard averaging, and then when you get down all the way on the corner, even though it's a deep lot going the other way, you have an 8-foot setback. I think Mr. Weiss will indicate to you as you go through it, that the setback that we're proposing will not have any type of an impact on the neighbors to the left or to the right of us in doing that. And once again, as Mr. Rubin pointed out in the report, it is only a two-story house, and we are keeping with lower density, fewer bedrooms, and increasing the parking. So we think based on design, that the variances can be granted without causing really a negative impact across the board. So I'll just pass this around, start out with Mr. Gallantino. Call Mr. Weiss.
Do you want to give us a number?
A2? As Mr. Rubin said, all other variances, everything else, we're meeting. So it's really just front yard building, front yard porch. Weiss? I can dispense with going through Mr. Weiss's qualifications. Why don't you walk him through the site and talk a little bit about the design and the variance relief that we're asking for?
Mr. Weiss, could you just give the date of your plans also, so I have further record?
July 29th? Thank you.
Okay, as mentioned, there was originally a duplex on this site that was recently demolished. What we propose is a house, I think, in footprint, which is more or less equal to or similar to the house that's currently on the corner, which is on the same-sized lot. Then all the lots, until the very corner, but the next six or seven lots going up the street are 125-foot-deep, which, you know, to this scale would be about here. So that's why the properties going down the street had a lot more depth to work with, so that's why the buildings were set back in general. What we propose is, as Roger mentioned, a two-story house, over-parking, so the ground level is all garage and storage. The second floor is living space, and there's actually a guest room here, which I would consider a bedroom. And then upstairs, we have four bedrooms and two baths. So I mean, overall, it's a fairly modest house. Its overall dimensions about 28 by 40 on the lot. As mentioned, we meet all the zoning criteria except for the front yard setback, where we're seeking a variance of-
Could you really build any type of a house that would be?
No, not at all. I mean, as Roger mentioned, this footprint would be less than 800 square feet. So, you know, given this configuration, you'd have about a 1,500-square-foot house.
Got to keep your voice up.
Okay. Yes, I don't think this house, this lot, would really be developable without some kind of relief for the front yard setback.
In your opinion, looking at-
I don't believe so.
You think- You think all of those are pluses for the neighborhood?
Absolutely.
I don't have any other questions, Mr. Weiss.
Anyone from the board? Is there anyone here from the public who would like to speak? Public portion is closed. Any other discussion from the board? Stan?
As Mr. Rubin's report indicates, the motion would be in the affirmative for C variances for front yard setback for the house. 21.2 feet are required. The proposed distance is 12 feet 1 and 1/4 inches. And for the porch, likewise, it's a front yard setback to the porch, 7 feet 1 and 1/4 inches is proposed and 15.8 feet is required. So it would be a motion for C variances for that relief. I don't hear any conditions at this point.
No.
No conditions.
Motion?
I vote in favor of the application. The type and size of the lot is inconsistent with the block. I don't think there's much more you could do. I think you did a nice job in keeping it without adding any other variances and the two small ones that you added. And I think it's going to be a major improvement to the neighborhood. Neighborhood's coming around, and the more and more new homes we get, the better and better it's going to be.
Bill Gatchel?
I agree with Tom, and I feel the undersized lot in the multifamily district, it was kind of constrained with the setbacks, so I vote in favor.
Clem Waszewski?
This lot has obvious practical difficulties because it's unusually shallow and because adjacent properties are set so far back make the required front yard setback unreasonable. I vote yes.
Jim Gallantino?
A couple assets that I see so far are the 12-foot 3 on one side towards the ocean and the 10-foot 3 on the bayside, which gives a lot more area of light and air. Usually when they do these variances, they come in and we're using a C and a 5-foot setback and an 8-foot setback for the driveway. Now you have a lot more room on both sides to give it a lot more, I would say, a better house on that larger lot. If you look at the front deck, it's high out of the ground because the house is out of the ground, which makes it look like it's really huge, but it's just a way to get into the building. We're going to start seeing a lot more of these houses with a lot of stairs, a lot more decks, and a lot more of this, I guess it's just a way to get in and out of the building. So in reference to those good comments, I vote yes on the C variance.
Margaret Huber Knowlton?
I think that this is the best use of the lot, considering its size. The pluses certainly outweigh the detriments, and I certainly vote in favor of variance.
I think they did a great job, you doing what they're doing on the lot, I approve it.
David Horn?
I vote in favor, and I think it'll be a nice improvement for the area.
For all the reasons previously stated, I agree and I vote to approve.
Again, everything that can be said has been said, I approve.
Thank you very much.
Next application is Wilma Warren, 109 South Knight Avenue, Block 11.01, Lot 5, in the S-30 district, degrain a C variance for third-floor deck. Taxes are current and proof of advertising and notifying is satisfied. Mr. Rubin?
Roger Rubin? Yes, I do. The subject property is a 2 and 1/2-story, single-family home under construction on a lot of 50 by 62 and 1/2, which is 3,125 square feet, being the second house from the beach on the odd side of the street. The proposal herein is for a third-floor deck off the master bedroom on the ocean side of the house, per the plan submitted by GV Designs, the architect. The deck would be 16 feet wide by 9 feet 8 inches deep, of which about 4 feet would project in front of the enclosed third-floor area, which is the seating area of the bedroom. Variance required, third-floor decks are not a permitted use, hence a C variance. Comments? Board members, site visits will evaluate if the benefits outweigh the detriments in this particular set of factual circumstances. Matters to evaluate are impacts, if any, regarding noise, privacy, aesthetics, and view obstruction. Second, third-floor decks are permitted on oceanfront and bayfront properties. At one time, they were legal everywhere under certain restrictions, but a few years ago, the planning board reversed that and decided to handle all but waterfront houses on a variance case-by-case basis. Three, there are no setback issues created nor any other zoning nonconformities. Four, only the projected 4 feet is seen from houses on the left. The deck is not roofed. Five, the deck is 40 to 50 feet away from the first and second floor porches of the house to the left and 50 to 60 feet from the house to the right, not counting the garage. Six, it is about 80 feet away from the house directly across the street. And finally, the outdoor living space of the house to the right, that's the beachfront, is principally on its ocean-side deck area. No conditions are recommended. Should this be approved?
Thank you, Mr. Rubin, members of the board. My name is Chris Baylons, and I represent Wilma Warren with respect to the property she owns with her husband at 109 South Knight Avenue. It's identified in the tax map as Lot 5 in Block 11.01. It's in the S-30 zoning district, and we are here tonight for a single C variance for that house for a third-floor deck, as Mr. Rubin has pointed out. Little history is necessary. This is a property that the Warrens purchased but was substantially damaged in the storm. There was an attempt under a prior ordinance to rebuild it and remodel it, actually to rebuild it, but that ordinance came under scrutiny and was suspended. Therefore, what the Warrens have done is designed a house that conforms in all respects to the zoning ordinance requirements for the S-30 zoning district, but are asking permission by way of a single C variance for a third-floor deck. The house is one off the beach, and when we look at third-floor decks, historically, what we always look at is any potential impacts in terms of privacy, view, obstruction to neighbors. And if we look at the location, for those of you who have, I'm sure everybody's been to the property, the location for this particular deck is at the- Any impacts to any neighbors? Because we see that the Gary Diamond House to the right, the beachfront house, is oriented completely toward the beach with really their deck and porch space, their only deck and porch space on the bulkhead. What is immediately adjacent to the Warren House in terms of the Diamond House is their two double-wide driveway and garage, as well as the Warren driveway. So even the front door of the Diamond House, as Mr. Rubin has pointed out, is probably 50 or 60 feet away from the deck that we are requesting approval for. So under the circumstances here this evening and with respect to this specific property, I think it's an appropriate location for this deck on this particular house, as these cases are handled, as Roger said, on a case-by-case basis, as opposed to having third-floor decks being a permitted accessory structural use in each block, as they used to be. We have spent a lot of time, you'll see there's neighbors here, we have spent a lot of time coming to an agreement with the neighbors, particularly the neighbor immediately to the left, Mr. Hacker who's here, represented by Mr. Placter, the Ringels who are here who are next to the Hackers. We have come to an agreement with them where they are now not in opposition to the application, in fact, support the application. I have a letter from Mr. Placter, and Jack may in fact tell you that if he is given the opportunity. We've made certain accommodations with respect to the design to make sure that the Hackers and the Ringels' view down the sidewalk and toward the ocean are not impeded or obstructed. And with that, let me introduce Gudia very quickly, just to show you what he has done. And I know you have several more applications we can-
Just raise, thank you, raise your hand if you have testimony about-
Gudia, you prepared the plan that's been submitted to the board for their consideration?
Yes.
Obviously, you've done the zoning-
Could you speak into the mic, please? We can't hear you.
You have prepared the zoning plans and you have prepared the construction drawings upon which the house is now being constructed?
Yes, I did.
And since obtaining a building permit, we have, and you have revised the plans to show a third-floor deck?
Yes, I did.
And you have placed it in such a location to be as least impactful to the neighbors as possible?
Absolutely.
Would you please show on your plan, if you would, the location of the third- Why you put it there in terms of any impacts to the neighbors? And you can take this with you, Gudia. Here you go.
I think I can speak very loud. I mean, if you need mic, I have very loud voice. Anyway, location of the deck will be on the right upper corner. It was originally roof above deck on the first floor, so replacing roof with deck will not change anything except just provide additional option for the client.
And the reason you don't believe there's any impact then to the neighbors? Is really located behind this curvilinear-
Yes, yes, it's tower-type structural, so no matter what, after this corner, you'll never see this deck.
So your view corridor this way is really if there's any impediment to it-
Absolutely.
And that goes all the way up to the third floor?
Yes.
And that element meets all the required setbacks for the principal structure?
Hundred percent.
And everything else with respect to this property?
Hundred percent.
Beats all the zoning criteria?
Hundred percent.
Thank you very much. Mr. Patterson, that's all I have. Mr. Warren is here. Should anybody have any questions with respect to the application?
Craig, I have one question for you. You said that you made arrangements with the neighbors. Does that have any significance on what we're looking at here?
No, Mr. Collins, it does not. What we have done and what the neighbor, Mr. Hacker, has requested along with his wrangle, I believe, is- The Hacker driveway, Tom, is right here. There was a wall running along the property line. A portion of that wall, if requested, the hackers have been removed, so as not to impede opening and closing.
The concessions have nothing to do actually with the physical deck. That's fine.
The second thing is, the railings at this location on the downstreet side of the decks, they were opaque walls. They have been changed to an open-style railing. So to the extent that Hackers or the Ringels have a view down the street, they're not looking to the button end, so to speak, of the decks from the Warren House are not walls anymore, they are open railing systems. And I have agreed to maintain open railing systems going forward, so they're not looking at a wall as opposed to a railing.
So it's no significant change to the-
There's no change to the structural plan whatsoever. There are just some view obstruction items that we need to clear up hopefully in satisfaction so that the-
Okay, thank you, Chris.
Thank you very much.
Chris, the gentleman who said he prepared the plans-
Yes.
Is he a registered New Jersey architect?
I'm principal of GV Design. My staff, I don't have license in New Jersey, we have people in license in New Jersey which seal these drawings. But I'm principal for 30 years of this office and 30 years of practice in the United States.
The drawings were sealed by registered New Jersey licensed architect. Network in his office, he's the principal of the office. He is not a licensed architect in New Jersey, but it was sealed by his employee, Wes.
So he is not testifying as an expert, then?
Any other questions by the board? Is there anyone here from the public that would like to speak? Any neighbors? Public portion is closed.
I have a question. Would that be a condition? The opening on the railings? The openings, the clearer openings?
Yeah, that should be a condition, I mean, I think. I mean, neighbors are going to require, I would think they want it to be a condition of approval.
It doesn't need to be in a resolution. We have a letter agreement signed by us and by the neighbors. Resolution doesn't need to be in the resolution.
Why's that?
Because I'm asking that or not. We have a letter agreement that's entered into which has additional details, which this board is-
So when the neighbors move, what happens? When the neighbors move, what happens? They're not part of that agreement?
That's right. We deal with it at that point in time. We'd ask that it not be in the resolution.
All right, well, I'll let the board determine that. I would recommend that it be in the resolution. Thank you.
Chris? I think Stan's right. Unfortunately, if the, what we pass tonight stays with the property, the owners may not.
There is an agreement as between property owners.
Right, but if the owners change, then that agreement can change. It can't survive-
I don't agree with that. I don't agree with that. There is an agreement as between owners with respect to certain rights, because these particular companies, because these particular owners had, these owners had concerns. Future owners may not have the same concerns. I can't speak- We, I can't, I can't speak for anybody who's going to purchase the Warren House or anybody who's going to purchase the Hacker House. This is an agreement as between individuals.
But just to have an open rail third floor railing, what's the big deal?
That's different, Tom. If the board wants to say the railing on the third floor, because we're...
That's all we're dealing with.
If the board wants to place a condition on this application that the railing parallel to Atlantic Avenue on the third floor remain an open railing system, I have no problem with that as a condition of this approval, none.
Is that good, Stan?
That's fine with me. I just, you know, the board just doesn't want to do any more work than it has to in the future, so the board has an interest in giving a variance, so that's, I understand a neighbor doesn't object, but the board might want to not cause future work for themselves with another neighbor company and when that agreement ends.
I'm shocked that there was, it was personal to, to these properties, to these individuals that worked their way into agreement.
Absolutely, yeah.
As to the third floor railing is parallel to Atlantic, no problem being a condition of that, but making an open rail.
Is that the only condition with the neighbors, only the side rail, not the front rail?
That's right.
Okay.
Fine. You can, you can make a condition that the third floor railing system remain an open rail.
Well, it has two sides at the front, and if it's not both sides, it's meaningless. Now, what, what is an open rail system? Someone tell me what that is?
It's supposed to be an opaque wall.
That would be like a, air between the rails?
Pickets.
Okay.
There are decorative iron railing systems, and we've actually passed on to our agreement between us, that's the, actually on the plan. If you look, if you look at the front elevation, it's actually shown on the plan. And if that, that type of railing or similar type of railing is the agreement, but if the board wants an open railing system versus opaque wall, a third floor deck, all sides, that absolutely definitely...
Usually, the third floor, the deck, the problem with third floor decks is looking down on neighbors, not people looking up. It seems...
Well, the floor is down.
Yeah, I understand that. I, I don't see where the third floor deck's blocking anything. It's usually for the privacy of the neighbors.
If the issue being, facing the ocean now, if these guys on the seventh floor deck looking toward the ocean, they don't want to be looking inside...
But this is the third floor deck.
It is, but Mr. Hacker, one day might have turned the floor deck also, and he's looking that way, he doesn't want to look at my deck wall as opposed to my deck rail.
Would you like to make a motion?
Okay, second.
No, Stan's going to read the motion and the conditions.
Sorry, essentially, it's C variance for the third floor deck, which isn't permitted with the condition that the third floor railing is an open railing system as described on the record.
Would you like to make that motion?
No, you can make the motion, Jim.
I'm in to motion.
I vote in favor of the application. When I did my site inspection of the house, the house is going to be a magnificent house. I think it's going to be a major asset to the neighborhood. It just keeps coming up and up. It's only going to increase values there. And the way the design was and tucking that deck in, it's so minimal. I mean, it has no negative impacts on anybody or anything in that block, so I vote in favor.
That's why we're, why we're bringing individual third floor decks to the board, so we get a chance to look at them and see what they impede on other neighbors, seeing that this doesn't impede on other neighbors, and actually gives them a nicer view of the ocean. That's why I vote in favor.
I have heard no valid testimony to justify a C variance to allow this third floor deck. I vote no.
Jim Galantino?
There's only four feet of the deck that projects outside the house, but you can see from the house next door. So it's the minimalist amount of the deck that you're actually going to see from the third floor. I feel that this is not enough to create a hardship for the applicant, so I vote yes.
Margaret Nambolte?
I see no negative impacts as to noise and privacy of the neighbors and no other obstruction, so I vote yes.
Mike Crisalding?
I'm not for third floor decks. I just, I think we're setting a bad precedent, but if you down and you look at that project, like Jim said, it's set so far back in, it's going to have no impact on anybody and improve the look of the house. I vote yes.
Deck and the, I agree with the open part and doing away with the wall both down and up.
I believe the benefits outweigh the detriments, and I'm pleased that the neighbors were able to work out an agreement so that everyone's happy with the architectural design. I vote yes.
I went up on the deck today, and you can hardly see the neighbor's house to the, to the left, and to the right is just, you're looking at the back of the neighbor's house. I see no impact on the neighborhood whatsoever, and the deck is not obtrusive to the neighborhood. The deck is set back in, so I vote yes.
Next case is Sidney Geller, 108 North Thurlo Avenue, Block 321, Lot 20, in the S-30 district, degrain of C variance for side and rear yard setback. February 2013 approval to be adjusted due to survey discrepancy. Taxes are current and proof of advertising and notifying is satisfied. Mr. Rubin?
Roger Rubin? The subject property is a two and a half story, single-family house on a lot of forty-one by eighty feet, totaling three thousand two hundred twenty, three thousand two hundred eighty square feet. The house has four bedrooms and a third floor loft, front porch and rear at-grade deck, shower enclosure and rear yard shed. It is proposed via the Peter Weiss Plan to enlarge the kitchen into the rear yard, a one-story only addition of seven feet by twelve feet two and three-quarter inches to make a more livable kitchen for the family. The addition would be constructed three point seven feet from the right side property line and twelve point five one feet from the rear property line. The board will remember, this kitchen extension was approved in February of 2013, but there was a dispute by a neighbor as to the accuracy of the survey. At that time, the side setback was four feet seven inches and the rear was fourteen feet three and three-quarter inches. The corrected survey yields the closer tolerances set forth above, hence the return to the board. Variance is required. Rear setback sixteen feet required versus twelve point fifty-one to the addition. Right side setback, five feet required versus three point seven to match the existing side wall. Combined side setbacks, fifteen point one seven required versus eleven point seven five as shown on the plan. Comments regarding the right side setback, it is at least fifteen feet to the house to the right, and the kitchen addition is shielded from that house by a rather large garage and evergreen shrubs. Next, the combined side setback variance is a continuation of existing side walls and creates no apparent negative impacts on air, light or view obstruction. The rear setback, while a variance is needed for about three and a half feet, note that the balance of the house is nineteen and a half feet from the rear property line, exceeding the requirement by three and a half feet. Also, the proposed addition is somewhat hidden from the house to the rear by an oversized shed, as well as an oversized rear setback of its own. My last point is incorrect. It was pointed out to me that I had overlooked on the plan that the, a current survey of the elevation of the existing kitchen has it over the required FEMA elevation, so there's no variance nor any discussion needed on that point.
Thank you, Mr. Rubin, members of the board. My name is Chris Ballson, and I represent the Gellers who are here this evening for the second time with the same exact application that we heard several months ago. As Roger said, a neighbor correctly pointed out that a survey prepared several years ago was inaccurate. Had the property resurveyed, and the neighbor was, was correct. So the distinction that we are drawing today for this single-story kitchen addition in the backyard to the right side of the house is that previously, the rear yard setback would have been fourteen versus sixteen, that's required. That's what the board granted. With respect to what is, you're seeing this evening, we are asking for a rear yard setback of twelve point five one versus sixteen, about a foot and a half difference. Rear yard, and again, as Roger pointed out... Neighbors, the right side yard setback, we previously had to mention that four point six six. It really is three point seven, so it's about a one-foot difference on the right side yard. There are no other changes to the plan. It is the same addition. The addition has not increased in size. The only thing that has changed is the survey and the magnitude, so to speak, I hate to use that word, but the magnitude of the variances. Pete, very briefly, just touch upon the plan as revised, if you would.
Okay.
And your opinion as to whether or not the fact that the survey was wrong and the dimensions were off creates any addition...
I don't believe it did. I think at the previous hearing in February, we kind of knew that the survey was off. We basically knew that the house was already two feet to the rear from where the survey showed. That was kind of a given, I think. What we didn't know at the time was that the house was actually to the right, about eleven inches. So we had it resurveyed, and three things were different. One, the house was two foot, shifted two foot further back, it shifted eleven inches to the right. We also had the elevation shot, and, you know, it raised the floor by several inches. So, you know, it kind of helped us with regards to the flood elevation thing, hurt us a little bit on the side yard. The rear effectively, I think, stayed the same. So with respect to the side yard, as Roger pointed out, there's a garage here, there's some fairly large shrubs here, which are probably bigger than I actually drew, and this is a driveway, and then the next dwelling's over here. So this is... I'll just speak slowly. The house to the right, there's a garage here, there's some fairly large shrubs, and then the house is over here. So there's a, there's a substantial difference, distance between the two buildings. So I think this comes by...
But it's better without the...
Testing room two. Pete says, no, just kidding. Take the microphone. Yeah, why don't you just come over here and address the crowd from the center.
Nothing else really bad. I think, and then you've got like a shrub going here.
Otherwise, I mean, it's the same exact addition that was approved in February?
Is anyone here from the public that would like to speak? Seeing none, I close the public portion. Any other comments from the board? Would you like to read the motion?
As the applicant stated, it's the same application. It was just a error in the survey. I think all the setbacks are still flush with the existing home. They don't go any further. Essentially, it's a rear yard setback required sixteen feet, proposed twelve point five one feet. Right side yard setback required five feet, proposed three point seven feet, and the combined setback required is fifteen point one seven feet, and the proposed is eleven point seven five feet. So it'd be a motion in the affirmative to approve those C variances.
I vote in favor for all the reasons I did in February. I think it's a very minor, minor, minor clarification, and it's very nice of the applicants to come in and get the record straight.
Bill Gotchel?
Same reasons Tom noted. Seeing that it changes in the survey, really don't change the perception of what the house looks like from then to now, I don't really see any difference in it, so I vote in favor.
Glenn Wazlaski?
I don't, I don't think this project offers any particular detriment to the, to the zoning ordinance. I vote yes.
Jim Galantino?
I'm just glad to see that the original, or the relocated central air conditioning system has been put to the side and not in the side yard setback, which could have been a little bit of a problem with noise from the neighbor, to the neighbor. So seeing that, I vote yes. Thank you.
I see no negative impact created, and I vote in favor.
Followed by Mr. Galantino, I agree with, therefore I vote yes.
Kate?
I vote yes.
I see no negative impact. I vote yes.
Also, because the air conditioner was moved to the back, I, I vote yes.
Next case is Dr. Joshua and Robin Schwartz, 114 North Gladstone Avenue, Block 308, Lot 17, in the S-25 district, degrain of C variance for lot width and possibly others. Taxes are current and proof of advertising and notifying is satisfied. Mr. Rubin?
Roger Rubin? I do. Are the Schwartzes here, by the way? Mr. Obelenas? Mr. Obelenas?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, I have a question. Are the Schwartzes here?
Yes, Dr. Robert Schwartz is here.
Okay, thank you. The subject property is a parcel of land, thirty-five feet wide by ninety-eight point fifty-nine feet deep, I guess three thousand four hundred and fifty square feet, upon which a single-family home is to be demolished and replaced by another single-family house per the submitted John Obelenas Architect Plans. The proposed house has four bedrooms and a third floor playroom and two off-street parking spaces. The proposal meets the new FEMA elevations and ordinance 2013-17 in terms of first floor elevation, and is the prescribed twenty-eight feet high from the first finished floor. The variances required are minimum lot width, forty feet is required versus thirty-five feet, which is the existing situation. The second possible variance was for distance between principal structures. Prior to this meeting, Mr. Obelenas stopped into my office and showed me a certification that he's going to present tonight, that it is in fact, that it does in fact meet the ten feet, so that is not a variance. The only variance being the minimum lot width. Comments on undersized lot cases where all other parameters of zoning are satisfied other than the lot size, which cannot be corrected or enlarged, the board may consider the overall mass of the house as it relates to neighboring houses and to the block in general. Note, there are no setback variances, unusual in undersized lot cases, especially on the sides which do comply. Both the porch and the house are about six feet further back from the front than is required. The only condition suggested is that the file be supplemented by the aforementioned evidence of the ten-foot separation.
Thank you, Roger. Yes, John Obelenas?
I really was wrong, man. I will. Good evening. As Roger said, this is a single-family...
As Roger said, this is a single-family residence. Too loud? Okay, well, my son, who's a singer, shut, had to hold the microphone, but my voice is a little louder than his. It's a two-and-a-half-story residence, again, as Roger said, that first-floor living areas, a second-floor master bedroom, third-floor playroom. It's going to be built on a site that's less than the required amount, nonconforming 35 feet, at 40 feet for that, for that zone. The height, the width, all the parts of the home measurements meet the code. There is no variances for the massing of the structure. All the setbacks are respected, and the front porch, which is a two-level porch, meets the front yard setback for a building, and we have more space in front for a porch. All the prevailing front yard porches are a lot closer than the street. I know, Rich, I'll go a little faster. Anyway, it's a quick, quick presentation. I do have two questions to the board. The house meets all the, all the regulations, but because we're already further back from the street for the front porch, we meet all the conditions of the zoning. And there's some cushion to adjust it, we're in a working drawing phase now, that I'm going to ask the board, if we have the front porch at the ground level as a deck, go further out from, from the building face toward the street, still conforming to the code, is that something we can do in our construction phase? We're going to get approval, hopefully, for the smaller lot size, which has nothing to do with the building, nothing to do with the setbacks. Are we allowed to, to adjust the plan a little bit in this phase, not going to any variances, but staying within all the building coverages, lot coverages, setback issues and stuff? Is that something we can do?
Did you say just the bottom deck?
Just the bottom. We won't have a two-floor. We're going to respect the, the wall for the first and second floors, but if we can pull the first-floor deck out, so they have a little deeper front floor, six feet? No, less than, probably by three feet, because we have a coverage issue. We don't want to exceed any coverages for lot and for building.
Do you want to, are you amending the application to include that right now?
I do have a drawing that shows that. In addition to the certification for the 10-foot, I have, I call it A1A. The drawing A1A, which is in addition to the plan that was submitted, the A1A shows that we're going to be 10 feet away from that one neighbor on the one side. That shows that, as meeting Roger's specification. I have A1B, which again, falls within all the coverages, there's no variances requested, but we're bringing the deck out an additional three feet, just at the ground floor, to allow them a little deeper first-floor deck area.
I think it would be best if the board dealt with it now.
Yeah.
And it just seems like a minimal change to me. I don't, you know, I don't know what the rest of the board thinks.
And that's pretty much the presentation.
Is that going to affect the front yard setback?
No.
They had six feet to spare, and yet he's going three.
It still has a couple feet to spare.
It still has, yeah, a lot of room to spare.
And that's pretty much the, the application.
Any questions from the board, Jim?
I have one. John, the, your ocean side setback is five foot. Is there any chance we can make it five foot one because of the one-hour fire assembly we would have to do to the wall? And the board would need to know that if we're going to shift it.
It's going to be actually five foot seven inches.
Five foot who?
Five foot seven. It's not unusual, and I have, that's what the A1A is. It shows that we're going to be 10 feet away from, from the adjacent thing. So we are actually further than we're asking.
Now, is that going to affect the HVAC unit that Roger approved for the five foot? Okay.
Let me just make a statement. The issue that comes up when you make amendments to applications on the night of is that if a neighbor went and viewed the plan, even though it's variance-free, they didn't know what the plan looked like. So you understand if a neighbor comes in and says, "Well, that's not the plan I looked at, and that's why it didn't appear," that you're going to come back here, most likely.
Oh, I'm sorry, we're going to come back?
If a neighbor came in and viewed the original plan
Right.
that you submitted, and now you're changing them on the night of the application, despite the fact it's variance-free, that could be an issue with them objection to that.
So there's a risk that they can...
They probably won't. I'm not saying that. I'm just putting it on the record, so you understand that.
Stanley, you're right. I just checked with Johanna, there were no neighbors that happened in this particular case to come in.
And being that no neighbors came in, there probably won't be an issue with it, so...
Thank you.
Is anyone here from the public that would like to speak? Any other comments by the board? Stanley, would you phrase the motion?
It would be a C variance for lot width from 40 feet required to the proposed 35 feet. That's a five-foot variance. The new plan submitted doesn't affect and doesn't create any new variances, it just creates a difference in the plan, so it's not really detrimental, in my opinion. There'll also be a condition, I believe, for revised plans to be submitted showing compliance with the distance between the principal structures per our ordinance.
And, and the revised plans would show the five-foot, seven-inch ocean side setback and the porch enlargement three feet to the front. Okay?
Those are the conditions.
Eight cents.
I'll make a motion. We approve this application. Second?
Can I ask a question? Which one are we voting on?
B.
The original or the revised? Okay. Yes.
I vote in favor of the application. I think one of the greatest assets of our city that we have here, which a lot of other cities fail to meet, is the revitalization, revitalization of homes. And I think as each homes over time get replaced, like this one is, with a newer and nicer home, it keeps, it keeps adding to the neighborhood, adding to the community, adding to the value, instead of having old decrepit, you know, like a Camden-type atmosphere. So I think this is a great pattern, a great thing. I think it's no negative impacts on the neighborhood. I think it's actually a positive impact, not only on the neighborhood, but for Margate itself, so I vote yes.
Sorry. To grant the five feet to make a buildable building lot in the city is, is worth it just in itself. Otherwise, it would be just another vacant lot, so I vote in favor.
The narrowness of the lot, obviously, imposes a hardship on the owner. I vote yes.
Jim Galantino?
I just have one question for the owner. Was it flooded? Did you have any flood damage from Sandy? Oh. The, I'm just glad to see the five-foot moved over because of fire rate, rate of assembly, so that, to me, is an asset. It doesn't make a close space along that one side, so I vote yes.
Morgan, if you're all in?
I vote in favor of the application for the same reasons the other board members had decided.
Mike Chrisolli?
I vote yes for the application.
David Morgan?
I vote yes.
For the reasons previously stated, I vote yes.
Patterson?
Yes, I commend them on having no variances on an undersized lot, other than the fact of the undersized lot. I think they did a good job. I vote yes. Thank you. Next case is James Frye, 26 North Jefferson Avenue, block 229, lot 324, in the MF district, to grant a C variance for front and side setbacks and possibly others. Mr. Rubin?
Mr. Collins is recusing himself in this case. Roger Rubin? Yes. The subject property is an L-shaped parcel with 25 feet of frontage on Jefferson Avenue, a total depth on the right of 100 feet, and a wider rear width of 55 feet. Total lot area is 3,400 square feet, which is more than required for a two-unit complex or a duplex in this district. Until recently, there were two single-unit residential structures, or a two-structure duplex, on the lot. A recently demolished one-story, three-bedroom house in front, and a still-present, one-bedroom cottage in the rear. It is proposed by the plan submitted herewith to reconstruct the front house at flood elevation in a two-story configuration, but still with three bedrooms, with a slight adjustment to the side setbacks for the neighbors, and with three off-street parking spaces where there were previously none. And to raise the rear house to flood elevation, still with only one bedroom, and with a more attractive pitched roof. The front house would also have front and rear decks to make the home more attractive and livable for the family, which has owned the property for a substantial number of years. The variances and comments. Lot width, 40 feet required. This lot has an average width of 34 feet. There is nothing that can be done to expand same by adding land, and all, and as in all undersized lot cases, the board's assessment via site visits determines impacts on any neighbors. The total lot area at 3,400 square feet exceeds the minimum of 3,200 square feet required for duplexes. Second variance is building coverage, 38% maximum permitted versus the proposed 42.4. Considerations would include, while the absence of a pre-existing survey does not allow us to determine for sure, it appears the coverage is about the same as pre-demolition of the front building. The front house is only 28 feet, eight and a half inches above required FEMA flood elevation, whereas 30 feet is permitted. Also, there is no third floor and no third-floor dormers proposed for the attic. The rear house is only 18 feet, five and a half inches above the first-floor elevation. That is to the peak of the roof. Rear setbacks, 20 feet is required versus 3.1 feet for the rear house, and 13 feet, one inch rear setback regarding the rear porch of the front house. As to the rear building, it is exactly the same as exists, just raised to flood elevation, and the condo building behind it is at least 25 feet away. As to the front building, the porch is open and has no roof, while the actual house setback is fully 27 feet, exceeding the requirement by seven feet. And finally, side setbacks. Regarding the front house, five feet is required on each side, and a total aggregate of 11.1 is required. As proposed, it would be built at four feet from the right and four feet, six inches from the left, an aggregate of eight and a half feet. Considerations should include the shift in footprint in consideration of neighbors and the distance to neighboring houses. The house to the right at the corner is fully 15 feet from the property line to its deck, and 25 feet to the house, wall, and windows. So the right wall of the applicant's house would be 19 feet from the deck and 29 feet to the house. Similarly, for the other house to the right that faces the rear of the proposed house, it is a total of about 11 feet to their deck and 16 feet to the house. Regarding the house to the right, total distance between houses is about 12 feet, and that house appears some, that actually should be regarding the house to the left. Total distance between houses is about 12 feet, and that house appears somewhat higher than the subject house. Regarding the rear structure, it actually has three sides, two feet, six feet, 6.2 feet, and 31 feet. Therefore, there is no aggregate issue. Consider that the walls are, as is, only higher due to flood elevation. Additional comments? The board should consider that a long-standing, year-round family proposes to upgrade floodproof, modernize, and aesthetically improve very old buildings with the proposed buildings. Two units with a total of four bedrooms and no parking would be replaced with two units and four bedrooms and three off-street parking spaces. The applicant states in his narrative, quote, "Four generations of Frye's have called this house home. I have lived there for most of my entire life. My mother and father bought this house from their parents, who raised seven children here in Margate, and I raised my two sons here. My hope is to have this house our home in Margate for generations to come. No conditions are suggested at this time."
Chris Frye? Meeting board members, my name is Chris. I'm here with my father, Jim Frye, here to propose to ask the board for a variety of C variances, as Roger stated in his statement. As he mentioned, we're adding three off-street parking where there was none. We're raising the house above flood elevation by about three feet to allow for parking underneath. We're actually going to shift the building to the left by about a foot to accommodate the, the neighbors on the right-hand side. Actually, we're also, I know there's no survey of the original property layout, but we're actually shrinking the main house by five feet to, to address the frontage, the front setbacks, so that it would actually meet the front setbacks. Before we even began the project, we spoke with all the neighbors, asking them what they would think of if we were to go ahead with this project to, you know, raise the house up, add a second floor, and we wanted to know what their input was before we even started the project. And we heard from all the neighbors around, with the exception of the condo behind us, which they're seasonal. And from all the neighbors I spoke with had no objections. Actually, they were for us to upgrade and, you know, replace the house that was there, which was built in, somewhere in the 1920s. Actually, looking for a survey for the house, we found documents that actually place, sale documents to, to my family in 1926. We've been here since then. The house has basically went from one generation to the next. We use the, the rear house as a guest house for when our family comes during the summer, the winter time, during holidays. As in his narrative, he mentioned that my grandparents had seven kids. That means I have six aunts and uncles, and multiple cousins that always loved to visit the shore, and that's one of the reasons why we wanted to keep the house the way it is. Unfortunately, we wouldn't be here today if it wasn't for Sandy, and I wouldn't be here standing in front of you to ask for these approvals. It was, I guess, been almost a year since my dad moved in with me and my wife, and we are, it's been, she's been great, but I notice she's anxious to...
You got it.
To get this, to get this moving forward. Also, what I'm asking the board is for possible approval. We are planning to raise the rear house, but if, we haven't really gotten into what it would take to raise as of yet, if we have to, will the board approve us to actually rebuild the house in the same location at the flood elevation? I think that's it.
What he's saying is that they would like to elevate it, but if it falls apart, they'd like the board's approval to allow them to actually rebuild it. You've done that before.
Didn't we approve that? If, if it's flood damaged over a certain percentage, they can, over the 50%, that they can just build that house exactly where it was?
I'll bet. That, that was actually rescinded, but you can do it as part of your approval now.
Okay.
Anything else?
I think that's, I think that's it.
Any questions from the board?
I have a question.
Just do it, really.
There actually a friend who actually taught AutoCAD drawing. He taught it for multiple years, and we approached him, and he said he'd be happy to do it for us. We designed everything, but he actually put it into perspective so that it would be...
If the applicant signed them, that's fine. If, if an art, if a person that's not an architect signed them, there's an issue. Or if there's not license, they actually are acceptable, but according to the architecture standards that you gave me, it may not be okay for the architecture standards, but they're actually acceptable for, for legal standards.
Somebody else didn't draw the plan, somebody else inputted the, the information that we gave them into the computer to create plans.
I, I, did your father approve of the plans and look at them and understand?
look at them and understand them?
Yes.
Okay, he signed off on those?
Yes, he did.
Okay. I thought you were, so now we're going to have to go through that. I thought you were making an issue out of it. Okay, never mind. Thank you.
All right. Is anyone here from the public that would like to speak?
Why? You don't have to do that.
Just want to urge the board to approve the application. Our families, both the Ritchie family and the Frye family, have been neighbors for well over 60 years. They're wonderful people, and the house will absolutely be an addition to the neighborhood, and we look forward to it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak? Public portion is closed. Any further discussion from the board?
A real quick one.
Yes.
We're going to make Chris come back if that house does fall apart.
Say that again.
We're not going to make Chris come back if the house does fall apart.
Correct.
Correct? Same print, same everything, you can do it. Okay, that's
We'll put it in the resolution.
We'll put that in the resolution.
We'll put it in the resolution. If that happens, he's allowed to build in the same footprint.
I mean, just looking at the house, Chris, it might
At the sake of not going through all the variances, Roger's report accurately reflects those. There's three variances, it looks like, for the main home. There's also three variances for the front house. The main home is a lot width, building coverage, and rear yard setback, from what I see. And the front house is side yard, right side yard, left, and combined side setback. And I'm going to add as a condition that if, if the property doesn't make it, so to speak, or isn't able to, you can build in the same footprint. That approval is given also. Is that what the board wanted?
Yes.
Okay.
Motion.
I'll second it.
Saying that we're replacing Sandy damage, and it's, it's a tight lot, I vote in favor of the project.
Glenn Wazlaski?
I really didn't want to make an issue of the plans because I'd love to see this family stay at Margate where they've been for so many years, even longer than I have. And there aren't many of them around. I vote yes.
Jim Galantino?
Hey, Chris, thank God it's Sandy hit, because that building was going to fall down whether Sandy was here or not. I, I think it's going to be an asset to the neighborhood, and the detriment far outweigh the asset, so, I mean, asset's whatever that.
I approve.
Margaret Hubert Aldy?
It's a nice project, and I approve.
I think it's a great project. Chris, be real careful. And I approve.
Thank you.
Dave Martin?
I approve and congratulations.
I approve.
Rich Patterson?
With the addition of three off-street parking spaces, it really is a, a big benefit for the, for the neighborhood, so I approve. Like to remind the board that next month, there is a meeting on the 25th and 26th. We have five and six cases. Does I hear a motion to adjourn? Margaret Hubert Aldy motion to adjourn, and Mike Cristori seconded it. Motion, meeting is adjourned. 8:15, five cases.